We will now open up the meeting for Thursday, October 5th, 2017. Gary Bowden.
Here.
Frank Ferrari.
Here.
Marshall Goff.
Here.
Ryan Kennedy.
Here.
Chad Sigmund.
Here.
Vice Mayor Malfejo.
Here.
Mayor Goings.
Here.
This evening we have our prayer and pledge by Councilmember Bowden.
Tonight, we have an Autumn Prayer. God of all seasons, we thank you for autumn. We thank you for the touch of coolness in the air that gives us a new burst of energy, for the coloring of trees that shows the creativity of the divine artist, for the falling leaves that reveal the strength of the branches, for the hues of fields that bring peace to our souls, for the smiles on pumpkins that bring joy to children, for the fall harvest that brings us gratitude for the bounty of our land, for this change of seasons that reveals the circle of life. God of all seasons, as you transform the earth, transform us by your spirit. Amen. Face the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the foundation of our government, in which it is all with the liberty of justice for all.
This evening, we have a couple presentations. And if the representatives for the Breast Cancer Awareness Month would come forward, please.
I hear you. Whereas in 2017, an estimated 1,400 West Virginia women will be diagnosed with breast cancer and approximately 280 will die from the disease. And whereas breast cancer continues to be a leading cause of cancer-related deaths among West Virginia women, and whereas a woman has about a one-eighth, 12 percent chance of developing breast cancer in her lifetime, and about one in 37, 2.7 percent chance of dying from the disease. And whereas currently, the best method to reduce death due to breast cancer is through early detection of the disease. And whereas, based on your age and medical history, your health care provider will be able to make the best breast health recommendation for you. And whereas clinical breast exams, breast cell exams, and mammograms can save lives. And whereas, women should talk to their health care provider about their individual screening schedule. Now therefore, I, Jim Malfejo, Vice Mayor of the City of Clarksburg, on behalf of Catherine A. Goings, Mayor of the City of Clarksburg, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Clarksburg, and urge women to become aware that they are at risk for developing breast cancer and to discuss screening with their health care providers. In witness hereof, whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and have caused the official seal of the City of Clarksburg to be affixed hereto this fifth day of October 2017.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Would you like to say something?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Can we hold up a word?
Oh, yes. Breast Cancer Awareness, we are having several fundraisers for Bonnie's Bus. We are having one at Chick-fil-A next Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00. We are having one at Stonewall Coffee Shop from 8:00 to 12:00. We have one at Texas Roadhouse on October 16th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We have one at Primanti Brothers on Tuesday, October 17th. And the Elimination Dinner will be on the 21st at the Best Western. The restaurants that I've mentioned, they will give us 10 percent of the sales. That money will go towards Bonnie's Bus. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And if the representatives for the Domestic Violence Awareness Month will come forward.
All set.
All set.
Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime and an epidemic affecting individuals in every community regardless of age, economic status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion, or nationality. And whereas domestic violence is widespread, one in four women and one in seven men in the United States suffer serious physical violence at the hands of an intimate partner at least once during their lifetime. And whereas every day, three women lose their lives in this country as a result of domestic violence, and millions of Americans live in daily silent fear within their own homes. And whereas more than 3 million children have witnessed domestic violence in their homes every year, which can have a profound impact on their lives. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas only a coordinated community effort and dedication from every sector of our society will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity to promote awareness within the community with the use of hashtag #WhyDoYouWearPurple as the theme this year to honor those who have died as a result of domestic violence, to celebrate those who have survived, and to recognize those who strive to end domestic violence by providing critical services and assistance to victims in our community. Now therefore, I, Catherine A. Goings, Mayor of the City of Clarksburg, do hereby proclaim this month of October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, signed by Catherine A. Goings, Mayor of Clarksburg, attested and at right, City Clerk. Yep, there you go. And you want to give some comments?
I want to mention that we are doing our campaign for October for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As it mentioned in there is #WhyDoYouWearPurple. And we're doing a big Facebook picture and video campaign. I'm hoping, if you have time, we can snap a quick picture here tonight. And we also have planned a group picture on the courthouse steps on October 18th. So we'd like to invite councils, city staff, all community members. We want to get as large a group as possible for that picture. I'm going to leave some little cards that will tell you what Facebook pages to go on to check out all our pictures all throughout the month. And like I said, if you guys could come on the 18th, I'm going to leave a couple flyers for that, too. So are you all up for a quick picture?
Sure.
We can come back there, or you can come up here. Whatever's easiest for you.
Where's the Mr. Photographer? What works best?
Who's going to take a picture?
I'm going to take the picture, but I know with these lights and stuff, sometimes.
Just come around here.
Back there? Okay.
I actually got it when I was trying to put it on, though, and I totally messed it up.
Would anybody be willing to hold a sign or two here?
Sign the mayor, attested by the city clerk. It's a lot easier.
Come on.
I told you.
You out? You want me out?
To dispense with all of that language at the bottom. Signed by the mayor, attested by the clerk. What are we doing?
We're posing.
Oh, we got just, oh, good. Need to tighten up?
No, you're good. One, two, three. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you for all your help.
Yeah, I'll take that one back. But I will leave these.
Approval of the minutes of the conference work session on September 13, 2017?
Salute, second.
If there are no objections, then motion carries. Approval of minutes of the regular session of September 21, 2017?
Salute, second.
If there are no objections, then motion carries. Petitions, communications, and public hearings, please limit your comments to three minutes. We have several this evening. Matt Cottrell, 1633 Hoffman Avenue, wishes to address council concerning ordinance on rental.
They started yet, hasn't it?
As soon as you get up there, I'll start.
My name is Matt Cottrell, 1633 Hoffman Avenue. Well, it's funny, Martin. Been a long time since I've been here. Here's a little thing that happened to me. About a year ago, I evicted a girl for unpaid of rent. Next thing I knew, I got a summons in the mail from some lawyer in Charleston. I had to appear in court, circuit court for the Judge Matisch. She sued me for defamation of character. She claimed that I told someone that she was selling drugs and doing drugs out of one of my apartments. Well, we went before Judge Matisch. Eight months later, we go to court, but by then, I found out who she was supposed to have said I told her that. I went to the boy, and he says, "No, I didn't say that to her. She wants to pay me to go to court and testify that you did tell me that." So I got a signed deposition from him, gave it to my lawyer. We went to court, and it was dismissed. But the whole thing is, I lost eight months of rent because of this. All because someone said that someone was doing drugs. I have no intention of trying to evict anybody for doing drugs. If they're doing drugs in one of my apartments, I expect the police force to go down there, kick my door in like they've did before. They've kicked some of my doors in. I think you might have been one of them one night, but take them out. Convict them. If you convict them, I'll evict them. It boils down to that. We should not have the responsibility as landlords on our shoulders. We've got enough problems in this city. Now, if you want to get rid of them, notify me. I will go and bust out a couple of windows in the apartment. We will send code enforcement down there. They'll come down. They will put a 24-hour notice on there. They've done it before. They have to be out in 24 hours because the place is inhabitable. The windows are busted out. Now, that's the quickest way to do it. I've had it done. It's a way to get people out sometimes. You've got to go around the backside. That's all I've got to say. I just hope that you reconsider what's going on with this ordinance. Don't put it on the landlord's back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret Short, PO Box 245, wishes to address council concerning the drug house ordinance?
Come back, everybody. I just wanted to, I read through the ordinance, and I just wanted to bring up a couple of points on illness. And Ryan mentioned a couple of the things that I was noticing myself, which is the Section D that he mentioned, which it looks like somebody just kind of inserted it in the wrong place. It contradicts Section E. In a person may be found in violation regardless of whether an order of abatement is issued or in violation, regardless of whether a notice has been issued. So if nobody's sending in a notice or contacting the landlord, how are we supposed to know? I mean, how can we? I mean, it's saying here, a fine may be issued. So we're going to pay a fine, and we never got the letter. And then that would go over to the next page that says that a letter can be sent by certified or first class. And you said that was typo in that part, right?
Yes, and I think that.
It should say "and."
Yes, and I think what you're saying, both instances, we've already are agreed with you. So we're glad to see your support.
Okay, and then, of course, on that same page, inspections due to illicit activity, it says whenever two or more residents make a complaint that there's a public nuisance. So two people that I have somewhere in my lifetime made an enemy of make a complaint against one of my rentals, then it doesn't mention, definitely the police are going there, it just says whoever the city manager designates to send, then they're going to, that would be a cause for inspection. And then it moves on to ask the landlord to allow an inspection. And this is kind of funny, and you mentioned something about contradicting landlord law. We have to give a 24-hour notice. So if somebody's doing drugs, selling drugs, making drugs, and I give them a 24-hour notice, I don't think that drugs will still be there 24 hours later when you come for the inspection. So that's not going to work. The best thing to do is get a search warrant. I mean, really. Because if I warn them, that's not going to solve, they're not going to get caught with the drugs there, 24-hour notice. So I did want to bring that up.
And that's 1767-04.1A?
Point four, one, point one, yeah, A. It says whenever two or more residents, and then, of course, it says.
The chief of police. Or city official.
Or city official.
Who the city manager shall designate.
Which is just code enforcement, right?
Which is chief of police.
Or.
Or.
Code enforcement.
But it's, and again, I think what I said at the 6:30 meeting is, again, it's not inspection orders. This is, again, if the chief or law enforcement officer makes a buy, I mean, we have to have hard facts. We can't just go in there and say, "We believe we received two complaints here, so you're out." We ourselves, before we go in front of the city judge, have to have hard evidence ourselves to present to them.
Is that listed in this ordinance that you have to have the hard evidence?
I don't know if you've ever been to court, but typically, you can't go to court and just make it up. I mean, you have to have the evidence in front of the judge.
You don't ask for the inspection unless you're taking someone to court.
Right. We build a case. I mean, the law enforcement officer has to build a case, same as what ought to go in front of the amicable judge.
The case isn't being built on the basis of the inspection, right? It's, the case will have been made prior to that. Does that sound right? Yeah?
Well, the part I'm reading is about the inspection. If there's two residents that make a complaint, they want an inspection, and that's fine. Then I'm going to give, I've got to give them a 24-hour notice.
Right.
For that inspection. So then, I don't know what you're going to find 24 hours later.
You never know, Margaret, do you?
And then they have to be all dumb. Okay. I think that covers most of what, and I do like the idea that Ryan had about HUD inspections counting, even if we still paid $20, it would just save one less walking through of an official in there, because he's a, he's a fireman under every year. Rich Jones is.
Thank you. Jay Wolf, 275 Sycamore Shaw Road, Salem, wishes to address council concerning the rental property ordinance?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, city council members. I am Jay Wolf, and I own and personally manage over 60 rental units in the city of Clarksburg, have been doing this for over 20 years. Of these 60 units, 50 are rented to people who receive rental assistance through Section 8 of HUD. My goal as a landlord is to provide affordable, clean, safe, and peaceful housing. I take pride in not being a slumlord. I'd like to give people who are disabled and low income and are needing a hand up in life another chance to live in a clean, safe, and peaceful environment. Though there are numerous rascals who I've had to evict, I like what I do, and I like working within the city of Clarksburg. I tend to believe that your goals are the same as mine in drafting this ordinance and trying to provide a clean, safe, peaceful environment for all residents of Clarksburg. But one area of concern that I have is what I believe may be an unnecessary duplication of effort when it comes to inspections for rental property. Currently, the Clarksburg Harrison Regional Housing Authority hires one man to do Section 8, as Margaret just mentioned, and that happens to be Rich Jones, who is also a full-time Clarksburg fireman. Every new HUD recipient will have their rental unit thoroughly inspected. Every year thereafter, a very thorough annual inspection is completed on every HUD Section 8 rental unit. We as landlords fix any deficiency, and if not, we don't get paid. My hope is that if you pass this ordinance, I will not audibly have to comply with two different government authorities whose oversight is to do exactly the same thing, provide safe and healthy living standards. My hope is that if and when this ordinance becomes law, that you could carve out an exemption that would allow the HUD annual inspection, which I believe is as thorough as the city code, to suffice in lieu of a city inspection. I spoke with Lou Aragona today, the executive director of the Clarksburg Harrison Regional Housing Authority. He said that he would not be available to attend this meeting tonight, but gave me permission to express to you that, quote, "He tentatively would have no problem with sharing their inspection results with the city of Clarksburg," assuming that his board of directors didn't overrule him. I have with me copies of the HUD inspection form, which I'd like to distribute now to each member, if you permit. That's okay?
We need to pass them through.
If you don't mind.
I think that one's fine. Wednesday.
I think you'll see, by looking at this HUD inspection from the federal level, and then there's addendums in the back of the federal inspection list or standards, that there's some additional HUD requirements that the local public housing authority has added to make it even stronger. And one last thing I'd point out to you, it's just the first page. Put it further up.
Yeah, sorry. I've got a couple more.
I think to make it simple, nobody likes to do more paperwork, including the HUD office people. And you can see, they have a lot to do. This first page would probably be sufficient. Once it's completed, as you'll notice down on the left-hand side, the housing quality standard pass or fail is listed. Fail, there'd be a check mark there, or inconclusive, or pass. I think once the, if the landlord could obtain this from the HUD office and present it to the city and say it passed, that might be enough paperwork to do, maybe, to get this done.
Okay, thank you. We'll take that into consideration. John Fazian, 1308 West Virginia Avenue, wishes to address council concerning the drug house ordinance?
Appreciate the opportunity to be with council today. Most of you know me. I've been the voice of the Landlord Association primarily over the last 17 years. And our Landlord Association has no basic problem with the concept of getting drug dealers out of rentals. We don't have any problems with that. We do have some issues with the way the ordinance has been put together, and Margaret brought one up with the right of entry as a problem. We're concerned, and I'm sorry, apologize, Ed Mack, who couldn't be here tonight, it has some concerns. One of our concerns is where your need to get into our unit interfaces with that right of entry, and we have concern about our own liability in this process, about some legal questions. And I know these won't be, I know these won't be dealt with here tonight. Let me air some very longer. The Landlord Association is acutely aware of the drug problems in Clarksburg. We're also aware that there has been a lot of anti-landlord sentiment on this council and in code enforcement. My also landlords also believe we're being unfairly targeted in this adventure. Having said that, we intend to fully cooperate, but we have some issues that we would like to address with the city manager at some level. And I apologize, he did try to make an appointment, and we couldn't do that. Ed couldn't make it, and I was tied up as well. The other problem I have is with the rental inspections. You have been hooked on a two-year inspection process forever. For the members of the council who don't know this, the Landlord Association, over 10 years ago, when Barry Solis was the code enforcement fellow, we approved a rental inspection program. He brought one to us. We critiqued it. We said, "Okay, this is what we need to make it work." We never heard from you folks. Anyway, we do have a problem with the two-year thing. It's intrusive. There is no magic in two years. I know rental inspection programs, they go anywhere from one year to six years. For me, I have one rental left, although I don't have a dog inside anymore, maybe just a puppy. But for landlords who have 50 and 60 units, you're creating a burden every two years wanting them to do that. Now, let me say something else. Do your code enforcement people a favor. Strip that out so they don't have to try to do all the rental things within a two-year period. If you find out in three or four years that that don't work, you can always change that. But please be advised that it is a problem for people who have multiple units. We have people that have 50, 60, 70 different units. For them to be running around doing inspections all the time does not give them an opportunity to do other things that they need to do with the landlord. Now, last thing I would say, and I talked to Gary about this, I would challenge your basic premise that there's more drug involvement in rentals than there are in the general population. I would like to see the raw data with the statistics that brought you to that conclusion. I would contend to you, with the population of Clarksburg, there is a lot more drug abuse in private homes than there are in rentals. Now, rentals, because they get a lot of scrutiny, I think that becomes skewed a little bit.
John, I'll need you to wrap up here.
Okay, in turn to the long thing. But basically, that's what I have to say. Would like to meet with the city manager, with our people, and go over the issues that we have. We would invite you to the, our organization meeting next Wednesday, because we will have the managers that's there who do have issues. And I was curious about where they were with it. I don't know. When I called them, they were in the process of talking about it. But if we have to take a letter or something to them, we want to know that this is going to work. And I think if you will allow us that opportunity, I think in the end, you'll end up with a better product.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
John, is the Landlord Association still a valid entity, or they defunct?
Yeah, no, we're still a valid entity.
How many members do you have?
I don't know currently. We're down membership. We've had five people die. Charlie Fair, you know. Doug Gray, you probably remember. Claire Bedeker, you may not know. Bill Radka, a bigger landlord. Several people, we had some people who'd gotten out of the business. I'm actually on a, I'm actually trying to recruit new, good landlords. And we don't want landlords who do not keep up their property, who do not comply with the codes, state and local. And we think we have something to offer. We have a lot of good landlords who've been doing this for 20 years. And when I look around at my organization, Martin, the same people that started out with us 17 years ago are still there. We still have the nucleus. That says something about the landlords, and I think it also says something about the Landlord Association. But thanks for asking.
If you could bring me a list when we meet, I'd love to have the opportunity to see them and then make, and I'll distribute it as well to some of the potential members for you.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. One issue that I want to make up, when you're going to do this ordinance, one of the things that we really want you to do is notify all landlords, and particularly those out of state, those absentee landlords. That is something that we really, really want to have.
You mean to look at the ordinance and review it? You mean to review the ordinance?
No, 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 no. We want them notified that there is, that there is an ordinance.
Okay.
We want them to notify that there is an ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, they're not going to know this.
Okay.
And that's going to create problems, and that's the same problem that Martinburg's had. We've talked to the chief of police up there. But thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Martin Schaefer, 211 North Sixth Street, wishes to address council concerning the same ordinance.
Take this speak as long as John.
Um, three minutes. Three minutes.
The Honorable Mayor, the Honorable Vice Mayor, honorable members of council, city manager. I'm here today to say that I think, as a former councilman, that this is probably one of the most significant pieces of legislation that the city has had to consider in the past 12 years. And Martin, I commend you on this because, you know, this is a problem we have in the city of Clarksburg. And it's going to take a team effort. And what John didn't say, that the landlords do want to be part of the team. Now, we've had good cooperation, as Mac said from code enforcement, about getting rid of people who have a drug issue. I, myself, had a situation where General Anisa called me one time. He had a complaint about a tenant of mine, and I called the tenant in, and I discussed it with him and told him that I'd like him to. it with him and told him that I'd like him to leave, and he did. He left town, and I think that's the goal. But it didn't have to come to a police action. It was just a matter that the city code enforcement people are paying attention, and they obviously got the complaint that there was traffic. Usually, that's what generates a complaint, people notice traffic. And so, the situation is, I think this is a very good ordinance. I read it over. I contacted the chief of police in Martinsburg, talked to him for a good half hour about the success. At the time I talked to him, they've already had twelve successful implementations of it, and we reviewed it. We've seen there's a few mistakes, and, you know, every piece of legislation's a work in progress. And I don't, you know, I used to be a lobbyist, and I lobbied Washington, I lobbied the state, and I've never seen a perfect piece of legislation yet. And it's a work in progress, but I think it's a great need of Plarksburg for this kind of an ordinance, and I commend you all for the work you've done on it. It is a good piece of work, and I thank you, and hopefully, if there's anything I can do to help with it, I appreciate it. Have a great day.
You have extra time left, Martin.
That's unusual for me.
Yeah, it is.
John Romano, 1111 Country Club Road, wishes to address counsel concerning Frank Gloria's project.
I'm actually just, if we have any questions, if anybody had any questions needed addressed.
Yeah, we actually talked about it a little bit before in the six-thirty session. Does anybody have any questions for John?
I think I'm good.
Thank you.
Matine Abdul Aziz, 356 South Monocle Avenue, wishes to address counsel concerning the drug house ordinance.
Good.
Well, I think that, you know, this is a great ordinance. I'm a real proponent of it. Last year, I was reading the paper on Facebook, and I come across this ordinance. I read through it, and I read through it, and I thought that, you know, this is a good tool, you know, for our city. I spoke with several council members and Martin about the ordinance, and you guys said that you would check into it, and at the time you said you liked it, and you had to see if you can make it apply. So, I want to commend y'all on doing the job that y'all said y'all were going to do, and hopefully, we can take this. This is not meant for all landlords, it's meant for those landlords who are not doing their jobs. Now, I have a bunch of beautification activities going on in my community, and a lot of times I'm in a neighborhood speaking to the residents about events, and I like to get through and pass out flyers in two or three minutes. A lot of times, I get caught up talking to those residents who are concerned that next door, all through the night, they have activity going on, and it's drug activity. And, you know, those people or those neighbors, they know what goes on. The landlords aren't there a lot of times. And when you, when they address these concerns to the landlords and they do nothing about it, this is what this ordinance's for. So, you know, our city is in trying times, and, you know, we need an ordinance like this because without this ordinance, you, y'all's hands are tied because you know you do so much. So, I commend y'all on doing the job that y'all said y'all were going to do.
Thank you.
Police Department Holyfield, 214 Virginia Avenue, wishes to address counsel concerning the same ordinance.
I agree with this ordinance. I think it would really work. I've had a lot of issues in my neighborhood. You know, you talk to the landlords, they don't believe you, they, you know, nothing gets done. You know, something has to get done. Something needs done. I mean, in my neighborhood, I had five drug houses at one time, you know, catapult overdoses, drug busts, heroin. I mean, and the landlord, they just keep running to the same people. When you live in this town, and you know a lot of people, you work for the, I worked for the court system thirty years, you know who's in trouble and who's doing what, and you tell the landlord, and they don't believe you then, when at the end, then they do believe you. People next door to me moved out, got evicted, they went in, there's heroin laying all over the place, there's pills all over the floor, two-year-olds, three-year-olds running around. The landlords know. They don't do anything. They move them from one house, one apartment to the other. They start in one street, move to another, and they just keep rotating. They want that money, not all of them. But in my neighborhood, I do have some landlords, and they don't care. But we have to get this under control, because people are moving out of this city. I want to move. You know, so we need to get this passed and get it working, and, you know, and there's our good landlords, but then we do have a lot that don't care. They just don't care, and I'm tired of that, personally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Corber, 289 Clay Street, wishes to address counsel concerning the same ordinance.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Corber, obviously, and I live on Clay. I've spoken with most of you about the drug house ordinance. Seems like I'm one of the youngest here to talk to you tonight, and that's probably because my generation doesn't want to live in Plarksburg. It's the honest truth, right? Personally, I've had problems on my street. Again, I live on Clay. We all know there's a stigma, right? And I'm tired of it, because I have great neighbors, and there are some great homes there, and we're tired of the people, and it's not just rentals. I'll be honest, it's not just rentals. It's property owners who have no repercussions for the people that they have there, the prostitution, the drugs. I've seen and called in arrests myself to get it taken care of. But I've talked to most of you about this drug house ordinance once I found out about it. I'm one of the ones that Tina was talking about when he knocked on the door and said, hey, this is what's going on, what are you saying? I looked into it myself. I called Martinsburg. I talked to the chief of police in Martinsburg as well, came to you all, and I entirely believe that this is something that we need, and we need it now. And I appreciate you all putting this on, and I hope we can get it through. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no further petitions. City managers report an update.
Senator, again, the cry for rental housing ordinance, opposed housing ordinance is on the agenda in a new business, and I do recommend council approve it. Also wanted to bring to the council's attention that code enforcement has spoken to over twenty-two property owners, five property managers, cumulatively over five hundred units managed or owned by these, these people they've spoken with over the last six to twelve months regarding this ordinance have been in favor. So, I believe they have moved forward with due diligence during that, putting it together. Granted, albeit that we didn't reach out to landlord association, but we reached out to whom I would assume would be members of landlord association, and I think they've done a fine job doing that. So, again, I recommend council move forward in passing this resolutional first reading. Fall cleanup, the city's annual fall cleanup didn't begin this past Monday, October 2nd. Through the first three days, we have collected fifty-two and a half tons of debris, totaling two thousand thirty dollars in tipping fees, and compared to last year for the first three days, this is a forty-four percent increase in tonnage and in tipping fee cost. So, most likely, we'll probably be able to budget with this fall cleanup. Again, we continue to promote it on social media sites, websites, out to the public, so.
Walking door to door.
And walking door to door. Demolition, the URA, we did have the loan closing this morning, four hundred thousand dollar loan with MBB Bank. This will open up the doors for us to begin advertising, which we began yesterday, Wednesday, October 4th. Next advertisement will be Wednesday, October 11th. There'll be a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting Wednesday, October 18th at 2:00 PM in my conference room. The bid opening will be Monday, October 30th at 10:00 AM as well in my conference room. And then, the URA will consider awarding the bids on Thursday, November 2nd, and then council will also have an agreement with the URA presented to them for those bids that they are awarding on that same evening at the council meeting, November 2nd, as well as this one contract that is bid out on behalf of the city, which is in the Tiff District. So, there are eight contracts currently being placed out to bid. The URA has four contracts for demolition and abatement, which consist of twenty structures. The URA also has three contracts consisting of thirty-six structures for abatement only, so only the asbestos will be abated. Those structures will remain in place. The Public Works Department is assessing those thirty-six structures, which ones we can do in-house through Public Works, and then at a later date, we will begin raising those structures. Then, as I mentioned, the Tiff District, there are one contract that is out to bid on behalf of the city, and that does consist of four structures within the Tiff, and that will be taken out of the Tiff fund. It will not be affected out of four hundred thousand. And then, for lawsuits, we did have an ongoing lawsuit with Tina Leiber, Tina and William Leiber, against the city of Plarksburg. The appellant filed an appeal of the US District Court of the Northern District of West Virginia ruling to the US Court of Appeals of the Fourth Circuit, which is Richmond, Virginia. We did recently receive notice of judgment this week dismissing that appeal. So, again, this is a multitude of, again, lawsuits that the city continues to prevail on. This is the third one that's in the district court. This is the first one out of the three that were appealed to the Northern Court of Appeals, and we do anticipate the other ones to be forthcoming as well. But Ryan, again, bringing to the appeals, and here are the judgments that were handed down from the US Court of Appeals of the Fourth Circuit Court.
Water demolition.
Those are the demolition, yes. And that demolition as well was 420 Staley Avenue. So, again, that structure is still standing. Now that the appeal process is not expired, they do have ninety days to appeal to US Supreme Court if they so wish to continue that battle on, but once that ninety-day appeal process is up, I'm sure we'll get to that structure as well to have it raised as soon as possible. The people who live on Staley Avenue should not have been putting up with that structure as long as they have. The water board, the city did receive its final payments towards the one point two million dollar loan for the nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three construction, the Northern Waterline Extension. That payment didn't commence in nineteen ninety-eight, so we do commend the water board for carrying out reimbursement debt to the city. Ethics complaints, just wanted to follow up on that as well. In December of two thousand sixteen, Mr. Tom Jaquez, if you're familiar with that name, he did file an ethics complaint against me, a city manager. The complaint was stated that I had violated the Ethics Act by using my position to promote a business in the city's website, which my brother was affiliated. Again, January of two thousand seventeen, a year later, the Ethics Commission issued a notice of investigation, and just recently, as this week, issued a dismissal to that case as well. So, again, these ongoing complaints, most of them are false all the time from the people that get in them. Costs the city money to fight these complaints on and on. So, there has been a disclaimer now that we went ahead and added to the website to state that the city does not promote any specific business on the website. The content's provided by those businesses, and we encourage everybody to patronize and all the city businesses within the city. So, again, just a multitude of complaints that this individual's filed, just a complaint, if anybody would like to see it. There are approximately sixteen complaints Mr. Jaquez personally has filed against myself, officials of the city, that numerous, that's cost us probably over fifty thousand dollars fighting fictitious complaints. Personally, I think I'm investigating a way to go after Mr. Jaquez personally, because I'm tired of the frivolous lawsuits ongoing, hoping to get judgment for him and force him to sell his property, maybe to pay for things that we've had to do and the false things that he continues to, false actions he continues to make. Yes.
I just want to say something. Listening to all the comments tonight, looking at what we're trying to do with demolitions, we have people that are always taking us to court because they feel like their property shouldn't be demolished, and if you live next door to it, then you know what condition that house is. You know, we're trying to do whatever we can do to get rid of the drugs in the city. We have to try everything, and, you know, with this ordinance, you know, if you're a good landlord, this is going to help you. If you're not, then, you know, we're coming out for you. I mean, I don't know what the people of this community expect us to do. We're trying everything. We're trying to, you know, demolish all the properties, put the drug ordinance in place, you know. I mean, we're trying everything, and we beat ourselves up against the wall every single time, and I just wish one time that everybody would come together and say, yes, we have problems here, we need to demo these properties, we need to put this drug ordinance in place. I mean, we are trying to clean this city up, and like Martin said, you know, you've got these people that, you know, are putting ethics complaints over stupid frivolous things which waste our time, their time, everybody involved in the system, and here we are at city council having to waste your time talking about this stuff. I mean, we have got to move forward, and I'm sorry if people get irritated at us and they don't feel like they're being fairly treated. We have got to take this city back, and if we have to implement all these projects and ordinances, then we're going to have to do it. So, I'm just, I'm at the point now where, you know, we're just beating our heads against the wall. So, anyway, I'm off my soapbox. Continue.
Economic development. Economic development, ribbon cutting, Fairmont Federal Credit Union located at 600 Rosebud Plaza will be Wednesday, October 25th, 1:30 PM. And just to update on Robinson Grand, the construction update, the West Edition concrete flooring has been completed, as well as the framing. The exterior shell is currently being installed, which will allow for the masonry brickwork to begin. The roof insulation of the restroom concession building is approximately ninety-seven percent completed, and the ballroom roof is currently being installed as we speak. And then also, just on the police fire, under the police, patrolman Laura McGlon, she has successfully completed her portion of her Drug Recognition Expert Certification, which she took in Arizona. She is now one of eight in the state of West Virginia to have this certification. So, we're very fortunate and very proud of her receiving the certification, and she will be called out twenty-four seven. She'll be on call as well to go out to assess individuals, and those expenses will be reimbursed to the city through the Governor's Highway Safety Program. The Police Department SWAT team is attending the forty-hour of annual yearly training beginning of the week of October 16th. This will be a joint training with the city of Bridgeport and also the Harrison County Sheriff's Department, and the class is being conducted by the LA SWAT officers that are coming in to assist with this training. Sentra, the contractual agreement that's currently in place now with the Plarksburg Police Department, it's been in place since mid-September. This allows us to provide detailed patrol directly to the Sentra stop on Library Lane, as well as the bus stop at Oak Hall. Sentra did agree and recently approve extending that contract through December 31st, and we really see a positive impact it's had with ridership on Sentra, getting on the bus, as well as at the bus stops themselves, just from various people in the community mentioning that to us, as well as the library and other people as well. So, Chief, appreciate you and the department working at Sentra to get that done. The PRO officer at RCB High School will now be also working with WI Middle School periodically to teach classes, classes such as bullying, stranger danger, drug and alcohol awareness. They will be there several times a week teaching a class to the students. And then, this is above and beyond the existing presence we have there with officers now in cooperation with the Board of Education. So, at numerous times throughout the week, possibly, there could be two officers at that school at any given time. The Police Civil Service Commission did have a meeting Monday, September 24th to begin the process for the testing of the rank of sergeant. There are two current vacancies for sergeant, both filled, both will be filled with this testing process, and the test will be held Wednesday, October 25th at 6:00 PM at the Senior Citizen Building. Sanitary Board, the Dale Avenue Project, again, this is a project that the Sanitary Board did award back to Hall contracted for French Creek on June 23rd. They commenced July 24th. The project is about sixty percent completed. All the piping should be installed by Friday, October 6th, and then work, including paving, sidewalks, should be completed by late October. The wastewater treatment plant, we're currently accepting applications for a plant operator position, and those applications are being accepted until Friday, 4:00 PM, October 20th. Four-year requests, we did receive two since the last meeting, one from Dylan Engelfeld, which was received on Monday, September 25th, requesting a building permit record for 168 West Main Street. We have responded to him. Within timeframe, he has requested, there were no building permits pulled for that building and paid for, so therefore, the response was, there was none provided. The second request was from Rob Cornelius, received Thursday, September 28th, requesting copies of any and all emails and correspondences using the key words or terms of WVML, the Municipal League, and/or Home Rule, and/or Resolution, and/or embellishments from July 20th, 2017 to present, and that's between all members of council, myself, the mayor, as well as any personal email council may have had that conducted or received any official business from the city. Again, this is a very voluminous request, therefore, we have responded within a five-day period on this one, but the information will not- period on this one, but the information will not be provided until approximately twenty-five or thirty days out. Again, if council has any emails of large amounts of them, if you just want to bring them in, log in here, we'll be more than happy to print them off here. But as the state law does read, it is the reproduction cost as well. So this gentleman will be required to pay twenty-five cents per page once they're printed. And I can tell you right now, in my emails, I have over a thousand emails with WVML in them. So he will be getting a large bill before he's allowed to review any of this material.
Well, let me ask a question. Word says embellishments, as in?
A keyword.
Okay. Because if he wants embellishments emails, he's going to have about five thousand emails.
Twenty-five cents a page.
I have a question. You know, I just got a new photo of all my old emails that can wipe down. How am I supposed to retrieve those?
Well, they're still, they're on your computer. That completes the matter. Oh, and then just under the events, I think I might have mentioned, RCB Homecoming Parade festivities will be held on Wednesday, October eighteenth, beginning at 5:30 p.m. The parade, as always, begins on Main Street, goes down to Second Street, and then it concludes at Jackson Square, and then RCB will have festivities there immediately following the parade, which will be next Wednesday. And that completes the matter.
Thank you. Unfinished business, consideration of second and final reading of public hearing of an ordinance approving a modification to an urban renewal plan for lots of parcels of land situated in the city of Clarksburg, Harrison County, West Virginia.
Madam Mayor, I accuse myself, based on the interest of the client, of this matter.
Go ahead. Notices regarding the public hearing appeared in the X amount of telegram on September twenty-sixth and October third. We will now open this up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against may do so at this time. We will close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. New business, consideration of first reading of an ordinance of the city of Clarksburg enacting a new Article seventeen sixty-seven of the codified ordinances of the city of Clarksburg, creating a crime-free rental housing and rental housing registration program.
Madam Mayor, I move to amend the ordinance as follows. Throughout the ordinance, there are various paragraphs that are in italics that start with the word exception, followed by a colon, as to each of those where they appear to insert at the end of the first sentence the following language, or a similar document from the United States Department of Housing and Early Development, and then also to change the very first word following sentence to an and, and further amend the ordinance by in section seventeen sixty-seven point oh-four, where the last two separate paragraphs are currently labeled D and F, to change those to F and G in order to be consistent with the lettering, and in the newly re-designated section F, to change the words regardless of letter, to the words only after. Further to, in the section seventeen sixty-seven point oh-four point one, section C, to add after the words to serve a notice, the following language, containing the factual basis for the public use and service of activity of specificity. Further to amend by changing sentence two of paragraph D of that same section, taking out the word where it appears in that sentence, the first word in that sentence, after the word certified, and to insert in its place the words mail, comma, return receipt requested,
So moved.
Discussion. I think we need to have our own legal counsel take a look. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and say, yeah, every change you made is what, you know.
Well, we discussed it.
Well, but we didn't agree on it. We discussed it, which is two different things. But anyway, I say we change our motion to have council, our council, review the proposed changes and determine that that's acceptable. Can we do it that way?
So moved.
He didn't motion to amend, but there was no second.
I think there was a second.
Well, he moved it.
Well, I.
I think he seconded.
Did you second?
I haven't seconded.
You know, I thought we were, that's what we were going to do, but I agree with you. I mean, that would be.
Well, I mean, I'm not opposed to making those amendments, but I'm not going to make that decision right now that I agree with everything you just said. I mean, I know there's a lot, there's a few typographicals and periods versus, you know, semicolons and all that, which is fine, but, you know.
You would still also, I believe, have the opportunity to amend it at the next meeting as well. If you accept those amendments and we, if you feel it's not what you wanted, we can, somebody can make a motion at any time to amend it. Because those are substantial changes.
Right.
So we can always amend it the next meeting if, I'm sure your council feels any of those. The only question I would have, not to stall this, because trust me, we've been talking about this for every year. But when we add HUD to accept their certification inspection as well, you know, the only thing I would bring to the attention is, we've been through for three years with false accusations from many, many landlords, I won't say landlords, because I think that's what they were, against our code officials, and that was over their certifications over those years. I'm not so sure HUD inspectors are certified by the State Fire Commission, because I don't think they have to be, which opens up to me a Pandora's box, even though we've changed it through Home Rule, we don't, we do not go, the Fire Commission has no jurisdiction over the city anymore, thankfully for Home Rule, but what does that do now from another somebody, another agency that is quasi-county, quasi-city? I don't know what the certification, I mean, they may have them, they may not, I don't know. That's out of my realm of what they do over there. I don't know what certifications they carry from the State Fire Marshal, or from the property maintenance code, building code, if they do those, or just HUD, I don't know. That might be something you might want to consider looking into prior to making that portion of the motion.
Well, why don't we, I guess I can go ahead. Why don't we approve it with the intent to make suggested, suggested changes, and those changes to be determined at a work session, to be placed on the next agenda for vote? I mean, I think we need to do some discussion and some research before we vote on the recommended. And I know that we can go, you know, this is just the first reading, but, you know, why approve it like with the changes, and then second reading, approve it again with some other changes? I'd rather just make the changes, approve it, and move on, but approve it with the option of making additional changes.
When council has the option of additional changes?
Well, I know that, but I'm saying, let's, you know, let's not muddy up the water here. Let's make it straightforward and have a work session so we can discuss the changes.
Well, Jimmy, can I remove my motion?
It's your song.
I said so moved.
But don't we have to vote on?
Only amendment.
Doesn't there have to be a second?
Supposedly, I didn't hear Marshall, but I guess Marshall seconded his amendment.
Oh, I didn't hear that. I didn't hear that.
So we could vote down the amendment?
Didn't vote.
Okay.
We have to, yeah, we have to.
Okay. So we had, we had a motion made with changes, it was seconded, all in vain.
Well, let me continue discussion then, because I agree, I don't know that any of those is material as far as any dramatic change, but in that I was unaware that we were going to be making some of those changes, I would like to reread the ordinance with those changes and then make a vote. So I would suggest that this be taken under consideration and that the ordinance be brought back to us with some direction on whether or not those changes are material to the ordinance we're trying to pass.
But what we need to do is vote whether for or against his amendments.
Correct.
And as stated before, it could always be brought up again to vote on second reading.
Right.
It could also be taken on second.
All right, so now we got to get that motion off the table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Gary Bowden?
No.
Frank Ferrari?
Frank?
Marshall Ball?
No.
Ryan Kier?
Aye.
Chad Segman?
I'm sorry, give me straight, are we having a chance to make the amendment later?
Yes.
For the word with?
Yeah, we're voting on whether or not we want to make the changes to the ordinance at this particular meeting.
Oh, okay, that's okay, but will people just push that and do research later?
Right.
Okay, then no.
Ryan Kennedy?
I recite.
Vice Mayor Mappajah?
No.
Mayor Goins? No. Amendment fails. Okay, the amendment to the ordinance fails.
It can be handled at a later time.
So we have to redo the, all right.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to the change of the subject.
All right, so now we need to vote on, okay. Do I have a motion? We're voting on the ordinance as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I just want to mention that because we had such a solid representation of landlords here tonight, some of whom have been landlords for a long time, they pay taxes, they've been good citizens, I do want to encourage our city manager, code, whomever else, to try to accommodate those that still have questions. Apparently, the police chief in Martinsburg has accommodated every citizen in Clarksburg related to this matter. I would like to encourage our folks to make as much time as we can so that these, these people understand. It seemed to me, for the most part, the landlords support what we're doing. I think, or I encourage us to accommodate them in answering these questions that they still have.
And I stated before, I support the ordinance, I'll be going for the ordinance, and I'll be bringing up my proposed changes on second reading.
Any further discussions?
I just want to mention, there's something that I, I told you all at the very last second, there's something, wording in the conference called the Good Landlord Ordinance, and maybe when we do the discussion, maybe we can implement some of those things that are positive things for good landlords.
Okay, all right, we can take a look at that. You'll bring copies back with you?
I will.
Okay, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consideration of a resolution of the City Council, the city of Clarksburg, West Virginia, urging the President of the United States and the United States Congress to continue the federal historic tax credit program and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of funding toward Frank Gloria Field Project.
I move that we consider the funding for Frank Gloria Field Project at a cost of fifty thousand dollars, not to exceed fifty thousand.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
It's a great thing for the, for our youth, we need more and more opportunities to have the youth involved and places for them to have fun. So I'm in full support of it, so I'm glad, I hope most accountable as well.
I had the opportunity to watch one of the tournaments that came in, where all these kids and parents were there playing baseball, filling up the whole park, it was tremendous. I'm looking forward to more of that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of appointment to the Central West Virginia Transit Authority.
Madam Mayor, I move to reappoint Anita Bauer. I'm sorry, I moved to reappoint Anita Bauer.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Counsel comments? Well, I already commented a few times this evening, but I did want to call to everyone's attention that the week of October sixteenth is Municipal Government Week, and we're hosting a number of activities here at City Hall, one of which is a reception to honor the, all the members of the boards and commissions that have served for year after year after year for the city of Clarksburg. So we'd like to do a little reception on their behalf, and that is Tuesday, October seventeenth, okay? And then we're going to do an employee appreciation luncheon on Wednesday, October eighteenth, and that will be at Jackson Square. And then the Mayor's Youth Council would like to come to the next city council meeting and present a proclamation to the mayor. So that will be Thursday, October nineteenth. So, you know, we want to just, the reception for the boards and commissions is something we've been talking about for several years to do, and finally, we're going to make that happen. So I'm glad that that's on the agenda for the municipal government week. That's all that I have. Vice Mayor?
I would just like to say, thank goodness Chestnut Street's open. You know, I drove through there the other day, and I mean, it was just such a pleasure, and I've had people call me and text me and tell me that, you know, it's a long time coming, but, you know, it's finally done. You know, we took two projects at the same time. We did, started out with Lounds Hill and Chestnut Street, and, you know, that, those were two viable, those are two viable routes through this city, and, you know, it was a long time coming, but it's done, and I think everybody's happy. That's all I have.
Here.
Just as an addendum to my comments about accommodating landlords, I also want to commend our code enforcement department for already reaching out to many of our landlords to get their input on this ordinance. And I include in that the police chief, our city attorney, the city manager. This is a complex and delicate matter, quite frankly, and we've learned that from talking to some of the other cities that have implemented it, but if it happens to be a burden to some landlords, it's going to have to be that way, because we have to fight the problem, or part of the problem is, as our mayor stated. I mean, if there's evidence that this is where some of the problem lies, then that's where we have to go to fight it. But I think we've done a good job of doing our homework, and that's smart, because we want this thing to stick. And I, again, appreciate what they've done to try to draft this thing in a responsible way.
Marshall?
I just want to commend John Romano and the work that initiative you've taken, as well as the Park Board, you know, anything we can do to keep the kids off the streets. I agree with everything you've done, and you've all done an amazing job, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, and I'll echo Marshall's comments. You know, there was research that came out not that many years ago, which shows that the number one predictor of whether or not a child will use drugs is whether or not they're bored, or whether they're engaged in some kind of positive activity. So I think Pony League is one of many organizations in this area that provide that positive activity. I'm proud to be a supporter of it. And the only other thing I wanted to bring up is, for those who aren't aware, this is the Manny Brothers Hometown Edge Card, which was actually, it's a partnership between Manny Brothers and the charity that Coach Huggins created, the breast cancer charity in honor of his mother. And so if you show one of these cards, which a picture of it on your phone will work too, and donate to Manny Brothers, then a percentage of what you buy any day will go to breast cancer research. So I encourage you, if you don't have one of these cards, next time you go to Manny Brothers, they got a stack on there, and get one, and use it every time you go. It's going to be nice if it's.
Chad, do you have anything else?
I'm very lucky to be in this house. I've been there, some really important events that have been happening. Mayor's announcement, throughout the whole country, some really good ideas I think we can implement right in Clarksburg. I just want to thank everyone providing me to represent.
I just want to thank everyone providing me to represent council at this, at this, so...
Thank you. Frank?
The only thing I have is, I want to, I'm happy that we've got these houses out of bed, and I want to commend Martin and the code enforcement and the financial department for getting us the loan, and I want to appoint of bringing some of the houses down, and I'll, at the meeting that I'm at here today, the governor did a presentation to our group today in support of the road law, and we're all hoping that that thing passes this week. I think it's supported, and I think our council's on record of supporting it. The governor was here today, and he's trying to stop all he can to get the support, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Call for a German?
Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you. Same crap as all.